Good evening, like the board of the board for April 20th, 2020 to work. What that we have five ideas on the agenda. You stand for pledge allegiance.
United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, visible with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one is approval of the minutes of March 16th, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second, motion of second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All is on the same side, motion carries. Item two is approval of the regular meeting minutes for April 6th, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second, I have a motion of second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All is by the same side, motion carries. Item number three is operator's license for Andrea and our screens. Presentation by Chief Moeller. Good evening, chief.
Good evening, police department's working in the denial of this license based upon two convictions for operating while intoxicated the last, oh, three years now. One is from February of 2017, in which Ms. Srennis was stopped in Ozaki County. She was driving 92 miles an hour at the freeway, crossed over the center line. She was tested at point 140 and was found guilty circuit court. And then, in August of 2018, she was driving again in Ozaki County. Just called in by a citizen and was later stopped by police and tested. She had been driving point 186, was found guilty in front of a jury trial in Ozaki County, April of last year. For those two convictions, we recommend the denial. Ms. Srennis is also here, if you would like her to talk.
Thank you, chief, if she is there, yes, she is more than welcome to tell us about.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Please tell us about what's going on.
I made two mistakes a few years back. I was in a kind of a bad relationship and I kind of wreaked havoc, I guess, self-destruction. And I've been clean since. I go see counselor Cheryl Thompson twice a month. I've been sober for a little over a year now, probably since my conviction. I'm kind of in a good place at the moment and I've just been trying to keep myself out of trouble. I did my jail time, I did my OWI class, I finished everything I needed to finish and I get my interlock taken out of June 23rd of this year and I have available license.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Entertaining motion on the item.
I'll make a motion to deny.
I will second that, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all is by the same side, motion carries. Andrea, this is just a recommendation of the-
I'm sorry, I didn't, I wanted to oppose, just so you know.
Pardon me?
I want to oppose, I would recommend that he can-
We didn't get that far yet.
Okay.
That'll be a common council meeting.
Okay.
Andrea, this is just a recommendation through the common council, it will come up again during the common council meeting where the full common council will vote on it. So if you want to stick around and address that body, you're more than welcome to do that too.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Item number four is a list of the operator's licenses, and the names are on the paper.
Motion to approve.
Second, motion of second, all in second. Motion of second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All is by the same side? Motion carries. Motion carries. Item number five, appointment of Agent Jean Sage Rappel, GPM Selfies LLC Restore, number 4505, 11229, South Main Street. Restore number 4506, 1211, West Washington Street. Restore 4507, 1512, West Washington Street. And restore 4508, 1650, North Main Street. Second, motion of second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All is by the same side? Motion carries. Any further business before the licensing board, either before the licensing board?
Thanks, Steve, I would now like to call the order of the Board of Public Works. We have three items on tonight's agenda. The first is the minutes from our meeting on March 16th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion or changes? If not, let's take a roll call.
Aye.
Alderman Butchlick.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier.
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins. Alderman Caston.
Aye.
Alderman Hubister.
Aye.
Alderman Model.
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy. Aye. Motion carries.
All right, item number two is the Board of Public Works meeting from April 6th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion or changes? If not, let's take another roll call.
Aye.
Um. Aye.
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 All right, item number three is order for removal and replacement of sidewalks, contract 20-04, install new sidewalk and remove and replace sidewalk at various locations.
Evening, thank you. This item is in relation to our annual sidewalk program contract. So every year we put out a contract to remove and replace or repair sidewalks throughout the city based on either inspections from staff or from our consultant and also complaints that we receive from the public.
Excuse me, audio connect, give me speaker microphone.
We can hear you now, Phil, can you hear us? Interrupting me.
It's okay. Should I continue?
Go ahead, chief.
Okay. So this order is for removal and replacement of sidewalk slabs in front of the properties that we have listed in our database from those reports and complaints that I mentioned earlier. So we will use the previously budgeted funds out of the sidewalk program, the annual sidewalk program, to fund this contract. So we're asking for approval of this order so we can invoice the property owners once all the repairs are done and the contract has been fully completed.
All right, thank you, Max, does anyone have any questions?
I do have two questions, Max. Is the Villa Park Road, there's a large stretch of sidewalk there that's been closed for a little while, I think it's a safety issue, it's sloping, is that part of that repair? I didn't see it on the list.
No, that portion is not on that repair. What we want to do is, we want to go and do a topographic survey of the entire area. When this sidewalk was originally built, obviously there was a shelf behind it and it appears that, I don't know if it's because of the wet area, there was a wetland right there, that shelf has sunk and the sidewalk has tipped towards that wetland area and that's why we closed it because of the safety issue. So we want to go out there, survey the area and figure out why that shoulder has sunk, how we can address the problem and how we would be able to fix it. So that's something that we're going to do this spring. I also know that we have several utilities going there and I want to assess what we can do if we need to move the sidewalk, if we'll have conflict with the utilities. So that's going to take a little while and that's why it is not on this list yet.
Okay, and then the plan is to bill back the homeowners that are in, live in front of the property that's being repaired, for the sidewalk repair, basically?
Yes, for, so the city code is that property owners are being charged for half the cost of sidewalk maintenance. And so for each property, the city charges back when there is maintenance ordered by the Board of Public Works like this. We also give them the option to pull a permit if they want to do the replacement on their own in case, you know, they have a contractor or they know somebody who does that kind of work, then they present the invoices to us and then we reimburse for half the cost up to a certain amount, that's, I believe it's $6.50 right now per square foot.
How much does like, I don't know, just a guess, like what would one square of sidewalk cost a homeowner if they needed to repair it, what's their half?
It depends what they're being charged for it, but if, I'm going to use a round number.
Yeah, it's ballpark.
For the math, but if they pay $7 per square foot, in general, a slab of sidewalk is five by five, so that's 25 feet, so that would be $175 for that one square. Now, half of that, the city would pay and half of that, the property owner would pay. Sometimes they might hire a contractor that would give them a more advantageous price and so we reimburse up to half their cost on that.
Okay, so about $90 if one square piece is like ruined, so if they had a bunch, it would be, it could add up.
Yes, absolutely.
No more questions?
Any other questions?
Yeah, I had a question, Andrew, I'm sorry. Max, two things, first of all, is that 50% that we share with residents, is that, is that pretty typical for a municipality or is every municipality way different or do some participate in that, some don't, how does that work?
So the engineering department did a study a few years back, or several years back actually, and we found different communities did different, do different things. Some community assessed for 100% of the cost, that means the property owner would pay 100%. Some communities do like West Bend where it's 50/50 and other communities take on the full, the full charge, so the property owners pay nothing. So it depends, it varies with, with communities, but what West Bend is doing is not unusual, it's really common, there are several communities who do the same thing.
Okay, okay, and I also, I noticed on, on School Place in Barton here, there's some really goofy sidewalk stuff going on there and I know some of that's temporary, but I also know it's on this list, is that part of a completely different project?
Yes, since we're doing the reconstruction of School Place, we have had an order prior to this, like I think in January or February, so the Board of Public Works ordered those sidewalks already and then they are going to be taken care of under that contract, which started today.
Okay, great, thanks a lot, Max.
Sure.
Anyone else have questions?
I'll make a motion to approve, second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? If not, let's take a roll call.
Aye.
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 Alderman Kennedy.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you, and with no further business before the Board of Public Works, I adjourn.
Thanks, Andrew, I'll call to order the April 20th Finance Committee to order. We have seven items on the agenda. Item number one is the minutes of March 16th, 2020.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second, any comments or questions? If not, Stephanie, you want to take the roll call?
Alderman Butchlick.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier.
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins.
Aye.
Alderman Caston.
Aye.
Alderman Hubister.
Aye.
Alderman Model.
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, item number two is the minutes of April 6th, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any comments or questions? If not, Stephanie, you'll take the roll call.
Alderman Butchlick.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier.
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins.
Aye.
Alderman Caston.
Aye.
Alderman Hubister.
Aye.
Alderman Model.
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thanks, Stephanie. Item number three is a resolution approving the transfer of FEMA grant funds, presentation by Fire Chief Kuta, good evening, chief.
Good evening, everybody, the two, next two items are somewhat related. If you remember, in 2019, we received a FEMA grant, an 18 FEMA grant, this is the firefighters, it was for the new vehicle exhaust system in all three of our firehouses. The first resolution deals with taking the money that we requested from the FEMA government and received, of the $163,000 and change, taking it out of the revenue account and placing it in the expense account.
All right, thanks, chief, any comments or questions for chief? If not, I'll-
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further comments or questions? If not, all in favor say aye and Stephanie will take the roll.
Alderman Butchlick.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier.
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins.
Aye.
Alderman Caston.
Aye.
Alderman Hubister.
Aye.
Alderman Model.
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And Stephanie? Item number four is a resolution authorizing the sale and appropriation of funds of fire department surplus equipment, the air mation exhaust system. Do you have anything else to add on this one, chief?
No, just that those are the exhaust systems that were removed from all three firehouses, the outdated ones, these were sold on the city's auction website.
Yep.
The money we did receive from that was about a little over $4,600. We did have to make some renovations to Station 3 that weren't covered in the grant and this will help offset the expense of those renovations.
Excellent. Any comments or questions for chief?
Chief, chief, do you have the rest of that renovation covered or how are we going to do that?
No, it covered a little more than half, so we'll have to take the rest out of our general account.
Okay, great, we got the funds, so.
Correct.
Awesome, awesome.
Equipment per number?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further comments or questions? If not, all in favor say aye, I'm sorry, Stephanie, take the roll.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier.
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins.
Aye.
Alderman Caston.
Aye.
Alderman Hubister.
Aye.
Alderman Model.
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie. Thanks, chief. Item number five is a request to authorize city engineer to sign a tri-party design contract amendments for 18th Avenue reconstruction Paradise Drive to Vodrive, presentation by city engineer Max Marshall, good evening, Max.
Good evening, thank you very much. This item is in relation to the reconstruction of 18th Avenue between Paradise Drive and Vodrive. The city of Westman entered into a state municipal agreement with the Department of Transportation. The amount for design in that state municipal agreement was estimated at $465,000 with federal funding covering 80% of that cost. We went through the designer selection and we did the scoping meeting and the negotiation meeting with the DOT and the city ended up choosing R.S. Smith to, to design this project and the contract amount that was signed is $325,074.06. Now, during the preliminary, preliminary design, there were a couple items that came up that were not in the original scope. The first one is in the number of properties that will be affected by the reconstruction. The original count was showing 13, but we found out that actually 15 properties will be affected, so we need to add those two properties in the contract, so that means additional title search for those property, properties. The second item is regarding the sidewalk on the west side of 18th Avenue. Originally, we were going to bring this sidewalk from Vodrive all the way down to Paradise Drive, however, in order to do so, we would have to reconstruct the intersection of Paradise Drive and 18th Avenue almost completely because of the way the traffic signals are constructed there, we would have to replace all these traffic signals to reconfigure the, the intersection to be ADA compliant. Because of the cost and the impact and the scope of the project, we could not implement this solution. An alternate solution would be to build the sidewalk, but then create a mid-block crossing about at the driveway of Frehderd. And mid-block crossing is something that the city of Westman tries to avoid as much as possible, so the third solution would be to not build this sidewalk at this time and however great the area for future construction in order to make the sidewalk installation easier in the future. In order to do this, we need to have our consultant write a report explaining all this to put in the file for the DOT and because it is a task that was not in the original scope, that would be an amendment to the contract as well. Last fall, council allowed me to sign the original contract and I'm asking this time to be able to sign the contract amendment, this amendment and then if any future amendments, as long as the amount of, the total amount of the final contract does not exceed the estimate that was in the state municipal agreement in the first place.
Okay, thanks, Max. Any comments or questions?
I'm sorry, can I, yeah, Rich, do you mind if I say something?
Go ahead, Justice. Go ahead.
You know what, I just, I lost my train of thought, never mind, it'll, it'll come back to me, go ahead.
Uh, Rich, Max, I, I totally agree with this west side eliminating it, there isn't any residential areas along the west side from Vod all the way down to Paradise. We do have residentials on the east side, I think that makes total sense to just, at this point, not really go through with it and to reconstruct that intersection, I think, I think you guys made the right choice, I definitely am in favor of it.
Thanks, John.
I remember what it is, I remember what it is, now is that going to, is that going to give us, is that going to put us in a position of having compliance issues with the DOT or is that letter that they're going to write, that explains that going to be sufficient?
Yes, so that is the reason for that report they need to write, it's called justification of absence, so they have to explain the reasoning like I just did and then it's, it will be approved by DOT, they already saw the draft of it and basically they have to make it official, put it in the file, because of the federal funding, we have to go through all those steps.
Sure, sure, sure.
Actually, we document all this.
But there's no, there's no chance of that not getting approved?
No.
Okay, and the other thing, as far as, as far as giving you permission or whatever to, to do all the signing, is that based on the, the larger number that you, that you said first or the, the smaller second number?
No, actually, on the third page of your memo, you would see that the current contract is at $325,074.06 and with the increase, which is an increase of $2,017.86, the total contract would then become $327,091.92.
Okay.
It's going to increase about $2,000 on the contract.
All right, all right. Thanks, Max.
Sure.
Thanks, Justice, any other comments or questions for Max? If not, I entertain a motion on the-
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further comments? Otherwise, Stephanie, can you take the roll call, please?
Alderman Butchlick. Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier.
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins. Alderman Caston.
Aye.
Alderman Hubister.
Aye.
Alderman Model.
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Stephanie, thanks, Max.
Thank you.
Item number six is a resolution awarding the sale of $6.35 million in general obligation corporate purpose bonds, series 2020B, I believe Phil Cusson is unable to hear us. Phil, do you want to fill us in on this one?
I certainly will, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
I got, I got a few thumbs up there, good. This is, this is about week four of, of doing virtual meetings, this is the hardest one to get into so far, probably my fault. To add to the fun tonight, at 6:00 PM, the power went out at my house, so I went from my den to a friend's house, which is about two miles away, and up, up in one of their bedrooms, so if you hear noise, it's not my family. Well, very interesting times in the market, I think everybody's well aware that we've seen a great deal of disruption in the financial markets over the last month. On the, the good news is really the last two, two and a half weeks now, we have seen a real stabilization in the bond market that we didn't see late March into the first week of April. We've been monitoring this for not just the city of West Bend, but all of our municipal clients. clients that we are in the market with, and spring is a very active time to be in the market. Uh, we decided to proceed, uh, and go through the process of conducting a sale today, and I sent earlier today, and I hope you have in front of you, the sale data report, and then there's a corresponding resolution that came later today from World and Brady. So those are the documents I wanted to talk from, but primarily the sale data report, uh, which hopefully, again, you have, that was forwarded over to the city, um, kind of early afternoon. So, uh, as a refresher, uh, a month ago, uh, we, we had the sale authorized, uh, meaning we were there, you gave us permission to proceed with the bond sale. Um, we had since that time, uh, prepared the official statement, which is an offering document, uh, for the City of, of Westman. Uh, for those that are new, it's like, it's like a, uh, it's almost like a, a perspective on the city, uh, that official statement. The, uh, we held a rating call that al- also with S and P. If you recall, last cycle, when we went through our last, uh, bond issue, we switched from Moody's to S and P. We took, we went through that rating process, uh, as well. Uh, in the packet, uh, is, uh, the first page in is a quick summary of the results that occurred, and I'll, I'll get into a little more detail a little bit after that summary. This, just, uh, again, a refresher, finances the city's capital projects that have been identified, uh, for 2020, and those are listed, uh, on page four of the packet that we provided you. In addition to those, uh, $299,000 in water utility costs were added, along with 2.9 plus million of projects that are related to phase one improvements for TID 14. So the new TID was put in place, uh, late last year. You recall, we, we did a bond issue for the land purchase earlier this year, uh, and now we're financing as part of this issue, the pu- the public, first, the first phase of the public improvement really needed to serve, uh, the expansion by Milwaukee Tool. So that's what makes up the, what was authorized, $6,350,000. Roughly 2.9 million in capital expenditures to the city, 300,000 for the water utility, and a little under $3 million for TID 14 capital projects. At 9:30 this morning, uh, we took bids, and when we received the bids, we're always kind of curious, uh, who, we always know who has set up the bid, but we ended up with, uh, six bids. Uh, I went back and looked, uh, the city's correct record is somewhere between five and seven bids, so we're right on, right on cue with what we have typically seen with bond issues for the city. The rating was double A table, which, uh, is a very strong rating by, by S and P, and if you recall, when I was there last time, we talked that it's one notch above what the last rating you had with Moody's. So the switch to S and P, we think, really was, was very beneficial. The low bidder was Robert W. Baird out of Milwaukee at 1.7895%. So you're borrowing money for 20 years, uh, for these projects at, uh, just, uh, under 1.8%. The high bid of the six was 1.9322%, which is about an $80,000 difference between the high and low. You've heard me, those who've been around for a while, heard me talk about premium bids in the past, and we received a premium bid, uh, here again, which is pretty common for what we are seeing in the market. A premium bid is where they provide you with more money than you ask, request, and what you're able to do is use that money to reduce the amount of the obligation. So that's the first thing we did. We reduced from $6,350,000 to $6,190,000. That's the final resolution that you have in front of you. And then we're also able to use that premium and put it into the debt service fund. And in the debt service fund, in this case, we are gonna be adding, uh, 200 and, one second here, uh, 251,478 into the debt service fund. And what you're allowed to do with that is make interest payments on your interest that is due, and all three of these statements, general fund, water, and TID, uh, you're able to use that debt service money and pay interest payments, uh, for the 2021, uh, payments that are due. So that lessens the impact on the mill rate, on the water utility, and it helps with the overall cash flow right away, uh, for TID number 14. So the bids were received, uh, we accepted the winning bid at, uh, which was Baird. We were able to downsize the issue, put money into the debt service fund, and on pages three and four is a, uh, sorry, two and three is a summary of the bid tabs, who we received bids from. You can see Baird, which had a very large consortium of bidders that they bid with them on page three, on page two, some 20 or so bidders that were with them. On the second page, Northland Securities out of Minneapolis, Piper Standler out of Minneapolis, Beok Financial out of Milwaukee, FHN Financial Capital out of New York, and the Baker Group out of Oklahoma City. Mind it interesting that we got a bid out of New York. Uh, things certainly are shut down a great deal in New York these days. So e- excellent bid. Uh, at the end of the day, when we, when we put together this preliminary analysis and shared it with you a month ago or so, it was, uh, it was a whole different world back then, as everybody's aware. Uh, and we made estimates as to what we thought you would receive, and what we call a true interest cost. True interest cost takes into account, uh, these different bid items along with interest rates. I'm not kidding, we, we projected 1.79%, we ended up at 1.79%. And with the fluctuations that we saw in the market over the last month, uh, we were ecstatic that we, that we were able to just kinda hit that number because, um, there's a lot of guessing in our, in our world these days as to what we're gonna see. The good news is we, we sold, uh, bonds and/or notes for six different communities yesterday, or le- I'm sorry, uh, last week, and three other communities today that, uh, so we had a pretty good track record, we had a pretty clue of what we're gonna see in, in interest rates. Finally, if you look at the, uh, there's also attached, and I think it's really useful information for everyone to look at, I'm not gonna, trust me, I know you're busy, you're all at home, you don't want me to read the rating report to you. If you look at that, uh, we've included the rating report, pages eight, nine, 10. Uh, it's a little different looking rating report than if you remember reading through the Moody's report. Uh, but at the end of the day, what they, what they really focus on, again, are your strengths and your challenges. And if you look at the, the assessment of the city, uh, they really do talk a lot about a strong economy, a diverse economy, strong management with good financial policies and practices that have been put in place. Uh, budgetary performance where you've actually added fund balance, uh, over the last five to six years, so the, the city's in better position than it was certainly five, six years ago. Good liquidity, uh, all of which are very, very important. Adequate debt when you look at your overall profile, and they really spend a great deal of time diving into each of those sections later on in the report. But I wanted to point out those items because, trust me, I know how challenging it is to operate a city these days, and when you hear, uh, the second one, you hear strong management, good op- financial policies and practices, uh, I think that speaks very well to the, to the group they help, helping you run the city. The last page of the report is really interesting. If you have the ability to get to that last page, that kinda gives you a snapshot of what we've been seeing in the bond market, uh, really over the last year. Um, you can see from May of last year, or April of last year, till March of this year, pretty steady decline, and then that large spike that we saw towards the end of March into early April, and we're right back down to the lows again, uh, over the last, uh, week to 10 days. So, uh, we think a very good time to be in the marketplace. At the end of the day, when it all came down to it, we ended up a $60,000 loss. When you package everything up, uh, over six plus million dollars, $60,000 less than the projected numbers we provided, uh, last month. So really pleased with the outcome of the sale and the interest, uh, that was received. Uh, and it's, say, not to be lost, is the ability to put money into the debt service fund that will really help the general fund, the water utility next year, when there could be some challenges, depending on how long this lasts, uh, it'll help make those interest payments early on and, and, and create a little less, um, challenge financially for, for the, again, the water utility and the, and the general fund. So with that, I'll entertain any questions you have.
Thanks, Phil. Uh, a couple things with that double A rating that we've got now, is that gonna open us up to other bidders that you think? Um, you were thinking that we got one from New York this time. Are, are we gonna see other bidders that are gonna come in, um, now that we have that double A rating?
Yeah, there's, there's a couple of factors. One is the, uh, the, some financial institutions are not gonna answer the market unless it's over 10 million, and some aren't gonna answer until it's about 20 plus million. So you're always, unless you're gonna be just doing a large, large bond issue, you may not be able to, to attract some of the big, big issuers that are big purchasers that are out there. Uh, I think what we have seen for a double A rated, we would typically see anywhere between four and eight bids, I mean, you're right in that window. There's a few people, again, there were quite a few bond sales in Wisconsin, uh, today and nationwide. We're seeing a lot of the deals that were in position to sell late March, even early April, got postponed, so the market stabilized, and so we've seen a little bit of a flood. So sometimes you'll have a bidder that sets up, and then when they, if they may win an earlier bid, uh, they choose not to bid on this. So I mean, I think, you know, six is what we expected, and, uh, depending on the size of the issue, we could see that number increase a little bit.
Well, I was really impressed that you guys were able to hit that true interest, uh, percentage there, uh, that's, that's pretty good. I was not expecting that, so. Uh, and Jay, I want, make sure that, uh, we thank Carrie and her staff, who helped us get that double A rating with some of the things that the, that S and P has identified, so.
I'll pass it on.
Okay. Any comments or questions for Phil?
Yeah, Rich, just a couple, it's Justice, Justice Model here. Um, yeah, I was really impressed to see some of the verbiage in that rating report as well, and definitely hats off from me too to Carrie and, and the job you've done over the last few, few years, Rich, that's great. Um, but I'll, I just have a question, Phil, and great job with this, with this bond sale, by the way. Um, I'd been, uh, on a couple of video conferences with the League of Municipalities over the last month or so, and there were some municipalities that were, um, complaining about their bond sales not going well. Is that just because of, is that just a matter of timing? Or am I confusing that with something else? Or you have any idea what they might have been concerned about?
I would say that deals that went through in late March and early April had poor execution. And, uh, you saw that, you know, that last bond charter show, it had that little bit of spike, uh, for that, for that two week, two to three week period of time. There are situations out there where you have to go to market. You have contracts that are due, you have a developer permit due, so there are reasons that sometimes you have to go and sell in that environment. All deals that we had that we could postpone during that time, we really attempted to postpone. What was the term that was being used during that time is, there, they were, um, uh, forgot the term already, but there, it's kinda, it was like, uh, sometimes you received a really good bid, sometimes you didn't. The cover bid, the second bid ended up being sometimes way off of the, of the winning bid. It was kinda what, what's termed as sloppy bidding going on, 'cause people just didn't know where the market is. I think the market is pretty well adjusted now to the new, you know, to the news that is out there, and we've seen good execution over the last week.
Yeah, it takes a minute for things to calm down, I get it. All right, thanks a lot, Phil, great job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Justice. Um, so we do have a resolution out there that we can, uh, make a motion on. Jay, do we have to change the verbiage on that? It does say 6.3, but we're actually, I mean, I know that's the total with the-
It's 190.
Okay. So we'll change-
Motion to approve with that change.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? If not, Stephanie, would you please take the roll call?
Alderman Butchlock.
Aye.
Alderman-
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier. Alderman Jenkins.
Aye.
Alderman Caston.
Aye.
Alderman Hugisther.
Aye.
Alderman Model.
Hi, sorry. I just turned my mic off to say hi, sorry about that.
Alder Person Kennedy.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot, Phil, really appreciate it.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave my friend's, uh, son's bedroom now, so.
All right. Hope your power goes back on.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Phil.
Thanks, Phil.
All right, item number seven is the approval of a managed printing services RFP with office copying equipment. Presentation by IT Administrator Amy Ajax. Good evening, Amy.
Good evening. I am here tonight to seek approval of a contract for the leasing of 12 copiers through Vantage Financial. We have been investigating a managed print program for the City of Westman for the past two years. The contract that you see before you is a conservative approach to replacing much-needed hardware within most city departments. In 2019, Jay Shambow, Carrie Winklebauer, and I worked to budget the cost within each respective department's budget in anticipation of this printing program to come to fruition in 2020. In December of 2019, I released the RFP that yielded seven responses. The bid before you from office copying equipment has significant hardware discounts based upon the State of Wisconsin, State of Wisconsin purchasing contract. While there is a significant investment of hardware, there will be a reduction in per-print charges, as well as anticipated future reductions in printing via the software component of the program. By utilizing the managed printing software called PaperCut, we can streamline print, print installations to end users, reduce printing waste, track activity by departments and employees, and create awareness through thought-minded printing actions. By partnering with a third-party leasing company like Vantage Financial, it gives us a better lease term price and offers us flexibility if our future needs change.
Great, thanks, Amy. Uh, quick question for you. I'm assuming that by the time we're done with the printers that we own, they are pretty much used up and, or for trash, we don't really get anything for them on the end, do we?
Right, I'm thinking we can probably get, um, maybe a couple hundred dollars, but they're pretty old.
Okay, thanks. Any comments or questions for Amy?
Uh, yes, I have one. Um, the company that we're leasing from, would they be interested in it, or did you check with him?
Um, would they be interested in buying the old equipment? Is that what you're asking? Um, typically, a company like that would require us to pay them to dispose of it, so we're gonna use, um, some channels that we have through, uh, through the city and municipal buying to try to sell those to other entities.
Okay, just, just start it, yes, thank you.
All right, Steve?
Maybe, when I looked at that, unless I missed it, um, the police department is not included in that package?
That's correct. Right now, they have a contract for leasing, um, and in order to fold them into this, uh, particular contract, we would have to buy out their lease agreement.
You know how long that agreement is for? And are they gonna be added into that?
At any point in time, we can add a new department in, um, into the lease, uh, program, as well as getting the rate that we have right now. So, um, future departments, uh, we're looking at possibly doing that, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Just a, just, just one real quick question if you don't, if I can. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry, I, is this like a lease to own, or is this, uh, just a purely a lease?
It's a lease, um, it's a fair market value lease, so at the end of the lease, um, we can purchase at fair market value, um, we can enter into a new lease, or we can, um, give back the equipment and then enter into a new agreement for, um, whatever period of time we choose.
Okay, so it's like a four-year agreement, it looks like? So at the end of four years, we can kinda determine that? And how long is the equipment that you guys have right now? How long has that lasted you?
Um-
Do you know?
Yes, I've been with the city for 13 years, and my first year here was, we re- put in, uh, three machines that we still have today, so that's how long we have been, um, using the equipment.
Thank you.
I got quite a range. This one was the second to lowest bid from office copying equipment, and then they went up to almost $100,000.
Okay, yeah, you answered my second question. Thank you.
Amy, if I could ask one other question. Alderman Justice said it was the second lowest bid. Was there a reason we didn't pick the lowest?
It was only like a couple thousand dollars between this and the lowest bid. We currently have four copiers under agreement with OCE. We have a really good relationship with them, so we thought we'd continue it.
Okay, makes sense. Thank you. Okay, makes sense. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Amy? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further comments? If not, Stephanie, can you take the roll call?
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier?
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins?
Aye.
Alderman Caston?
Aye.
Alderman Hookister?
Aye.
Alderman Mottel?
Aye.
Alderman Person Kennedy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Amy. Thanks, Stephanie. Be no further business towards the Finance Committee. I adjourn.
Thanks, Rich. If you'd like to call the common call, it'll be April 20th quarter. We have 23 items on the agenda. Item number one is the approval of the regular common council meeting minutes for March 16, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any corrections or changes that need to be made? If not, Stephanie, could you take the roll, please?
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier?
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins?
Aye.
Alderman Caston?
Aye.
Alderman Hookister?
Aye.
Alderman Mottel?
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number two is approval of the regular meeting minutes for April 6, 2020.
Motion to approve. Second.
A motion and a second. Are there any changes or corrections? If not, Stephanie, roll, please.
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier?
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins?
Aye.
Alderman Caston?
Aye.
Alderman Hookister?
Aye.
Alderman Mottel?
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number two is approval of the regular meeting minutes for April 6, 2020.
Motion to approve. Second.
A motion and a second. Are there any changes or corrections? If not, Stephanie, roll, please.
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier?
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins?
Aye.
Alderman Caston?
Aye.
Alderman Hookister?
Aye.
Alderman Mottel?
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number 11 is the operator's license. Andrea, are you sure? The chief gave a presentation and Andrea answers the questions that we had originally. Is there anybody that would like to hear again from the chief or from Ms. Grenness? If not, I'll entertain a motion on the other.
I make a motion to deny.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to deny. Any comments or questions?
I'm just wondering, I mean, we have Ms. Grenness here. She talked about how she's gotten, you know, she's been going to counseling, it's been a year, she's here. I guess to me, that's the kind of person that we would want working in our community and the type of person we would give, you know, another chance to. I mean, I understand it is two, but I guess to me, she is going to counseling twice a month. She has an interlock on her car. She's had it for, I don't know if she's there, if she can tell us how long, but I mean, I guess I don't see the, I don't see the reason or the justification to not allow her to work at a bar and earn money for herself. And, you know, I think she's doing the right things. So I vote yes, that I think she should have an operator's license.
Okay, one of the reasons that usually this is denied when this comes up is that we like to see that the rehabilitation or the counseling process isn't fully completed before we give it again. The fact that there was two in such a short period of time, not that long, the role plays into it. And you're more than welcome to ask a question, you can shoot back at the mic if you want to, be my guest.
How long was your interlock? You said you had an interlock. Have you had anything since you've done that?
No, I haven't been in any trouble since. I have it for 14 months, and it gets taken out this June. We're two months away from being completed.
Andrea, this is Justice. Did you, I know this is kind of a weird question, but would you describe yourself as having had a problem drinking before the bad relationship that you were getting out of?
Um, no, not really. I mean, I guess I was in my early twenties, you know, it's like, I was single, had no kids, so I did spend times in the bar, and I've been a bartender for the better part of 16 years. It's just, I'm, I guess I'm just, I'm good at it. It's always been my fallback. Full-time job, I'm a nail technician. I do have college education. I do have a nail certification, some training. I guess I have just, it was kind of a circumstantial type of situation.
Okay, thank you. Hey, Steve.
Hey, what?
Can you hear me? Okay. It's really weird on my end. I can't tell if anybody can hear me or not. Isn't there, isn't two kind of a number when it comes to DUIs? A lot of people will get two and then never get one again, or then they'll go on to have 10 or 15 or whatever. Isn't two kind of a magic number there? Or am I reading that wrong?
I mean, it could be, I don't know, there's any real scientific study to it.
Okay.
I guess my question would be, you know, it's not like we're talking about a short period of time racking it to DUIs in quick succession. There was 18 months between the first one and the second one. That's a long time for a bad relationship to be going on, to blame things just on a bad relationship. That would be my concern. There's more of a pattern here. And with an interlock, you really can't go out and get another guy without another vehicle that doesn't have an interlock. That's my concern.
Do you have a response to that, Andrea?
What's up?
Do you have a response to that?
I guess, I was with a gentleman for four years. It was, we, he had a domestic violence and everything with me. I just didn't, I couldn't leave emotionally, I guess, and it kind of just cycled into something pretty ugly. And, I mean, I've been away from him now for almost two years, and I am kind of a single mom. I stay at home, I go to work. Well, now, now I don't go to work, but I'm kind of just, I keep to myself. I do my therapy. I did my counseling. I did everything that was asked of me from the courts, and I guess I'm kind of just asking for a second chance to be able to prove myself.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask a question quick?
Good.
Andrea, you said you bartended for a good amount of time. Have you had any issues in that amount of time? That related to your bartending?
No.
Thank you.
Andrea, what is, the purpose of this operator's license is to retail sale or in a bartending situation?
It's in a bartending situation at rally time here in West Bend.
Thank you.
If there's any other comments or questions, we do have a motion on the table to deny. Stephanie, roll, please.
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier?
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins?
No.
Alderman Caston?
Aye.
Alderman Hookister?
Aye.
Alderman Mottel?
No.
Alderman Kennedy?
No.
Motion carries, five, three, to deny.
Okay, Stephanie, I'm sorry, but your motion or your license is denied for right now. Andrea, your motion is denied for now. Are you able to rely on that? If that is something you want to do, be more than welcome to, and I wish you the best of all.
Yeah, congratulations on your sobriety and sorry to question you on your previous relationships.
No, it's fine.
Okay.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
You too. Thank you. Item number 12 is a resolution disbanding the Long Range Transportation Planning Committee. This was brought up a while back by Alderman Allen. Do you want to speak to this?
Sure, since I can find my mute button. I, I've been on the Long Range Transportation Planning Committee for just over six months. It last met prior to the time I was on the council. It really needs to meet on a more frequent basis. It's, as far as I'm concerned, failed to perform the functions for which it was put in place. And we now have a, two committees in the whole, the Finance Committee and the Public Works Committee, where these issues are better dealt with. So my recommendation would be to disband the Long Range Transportation Planning Committee, advise the civilian member of the disbandment, and put the functions back where they belong in the Public Works and Finance Committees.
Steve, basically, so.
Go ahead.
I was on the, Mark basically replaced me on the Long Range Transportation Committee, and I, no offense to anybody else that was on there, but I felt like we were kind of going to stalemate also. We just weren't, didn't seem to be, we didn't meet often enough, and when we did, it wasn't really, it didn't really feel to me like it was to accomplish anything. So I'm going to make a motion to approve that, just for further discussion.
Second.
Okay, before we go there, Rich, is there anything you'd like to say, since you're the chairman of that?
Sure. So I disagree with the assertion that it didn't do what it was supposed to effectively do by Alderman Allen. We were brought together as a group that was going to have working sessions to ideate about how to, on a long range, not in a short term, in a long range, how we were going to impact the roads across all of West Bend. It wasn't meant to be something where we would go in and prioritize roads and say that, tell Max what roads to do. It's never intended to do that. In the end, we've given Max leeway from that group. One of the ideas that came out of that group was to give Max leeway in the way that he was addressing roads and not following the program that's out there for him to use. We kind of said, hey, that's great that the state offers this program, but there are roads that'll never get addressed, such as Evergreen and some of the other roads that we did get addressed by the functioning of this group. So I'd like to see it stay. It is a, more of a brainstorming for a long term. It's not really meant to be a short-term fix for any of the issues that are out there. So that's where I would come in.
Okay, thank you, Rich. Chris, you have any luck? Would you like to add your two cents to it? Chris, are you there?
Do we have any other transportation committees? Or if it did roll, it would only roll kind of into the Planning Commission and also into Finance's responsibility?
It wouldn't roll into Planning Commission. It would roll into Public Works.
Public Works, I'm sorry.
All the functions that landed in Long Range Transportation Planning Committee came from Public Works, which is a committee of the whole. We'll sit on that. And it came from Finance, which is, again, a committee of the whole. So all of the functions belong back in those two, as far as I'm concerned. And there are certain things, for instance, we really should have had a PESA report. In other words, what is the condition of our route? That's required when it's completed, and it's already been submitted to the state. That was required back at the end of last year. It still hasn't been presented to the council. So we don't actually know where our roads are. And if we've delegated functions to Max, I can't find any, anywhere in the code where it shows what those functions that we delegated to Max were.
So there was no delegation of function to Max. That PESA rating has nothing to do with the Long Range Transportation Committee. That should have been delivered to the Public Works regardless of the Long Range Transportation Committee, similar to the conversations we've had, Mark, with regards to that. The other portion of it is, we wanted to bring somebody from the public in who could then get an understanding and help us, then have the conversations with the public that we can't just go out and pave a road with $100,000 and be done. There's a number of pieces that go into the equation for how to do that. My other thought is, if we didn't meet enough as a group, I don't know how having the Finance Committee and the Public Works Committee meeting the first and third, not having that ad hoc ability for that group, I think would be an issue as well. So those are my two cents.
But if we never exercised the ad hoc ability to meet, I mean, I had asked for a meeting of the Long Range Transportation Planning Committee after I got appointed and.
On the chair, I never heard a request. Had I heard a request, I would have, I would have moved forward on that. So at this point, without a request, I didn't move forward on it because at this point, we were dealing with other issues at that point.
Chris, do you have any thoughts on this? Like, I think Steve had asked, like, where you're at?
Yeah, I had talked to Mark about this too, and I'm, honestly, I'm comfortable either way. We can either keep the committee, and I can work within the confines of the committee structure the way it is, or, you know, give it a month or two, and we're going to need to create some sort of new mechanism to gain that feedback and to really research this issue. So either way, we need to do more digging on roads, and it can either be done at that Long Range Committee level, at the Public Works level, or at another form of ad hoc level, and maybe just as under a new name.
It seems, it seems as though, I mean, I can't be unique in that I get calls all the time from my constituents asking about roads and what are we doing about the roads? And so it seems like we've got eight or seven other older persons that are getting the same questions. It seems like at a meeting of the Public Works Committee, we could address all of those issues.
Does it seem like, though, if we're getting questions on roads, that it would be a bad time, though, to disband the Long Range Transportation Committee? Because then we could have, like, some experts that would be roll-off of that Public Works, I guess, to help advise us on the long-range plan?
Well, since, if you go back to the original documents, in the council, in the council meeting minutes, it was, the mayor said it was because Rich asked him to create it. And in the first meeting minutes of the Long Range Transportation Planning Committee,
Because then we could have, like, some experts that would be roll-off of that public, public works, I guess, to help advise us on the long-range plan?
Well, since, if you go back to the original documents, in the council, in the council meeting minutes, it was, the mayor said it was because Rich asked him to create it. And in the first meeting minutes of the long-range transportation planning committee, Rich laid forth the mayor's idea for the, what the committee was and what Mayor had asked Rich to do. So I'm, I'm unclear that it had a clear focus from day one. It's, it's prioritized road, road maintenance into those places where we can combine road, as road work with sewage and water projects. And where we, we can't combine those, we don't seem to be doing them. We have, you know, a, a plan that says over the next 20 years, you know, these are all the roads we're going to address. I can take, take you up to any number of roads in just about all the districts and say, you know, here's a place where we could really put some good road funds. We don't have a sewer project, we don't have a water project in this area. How do we address those?
So right now, there is a prioritized list that is out there that Max has. He can share that with you. But it's, it's, it's evolving over time as those PESA ratings change. Once, one road may break down at a quicker rate than another. So the items on that list are in a state of flux based off of what's happening year to year over those roads.
Evolving is a friendly way to say that.
I think.
I like the idea, what you said, Chris, about potentially disbanding this road committee, giving it a couple of months and possibly a reboot with a different mission in mind? Fresh start? Anyways, I made, I made my motion, so I'm going to stick with that.
I can share for council that Max and I have been talking about the PESA rating and a presentation that he is prepared to come before to council in the, in the near future, as early as a May meeting would be fine, and present current state and that list that Rich is talking about. That's the same list that has been maintained through the long-range transportation planning committee. Just been updated as we've accomplished some roads and added the significant expenditures of 7th and 18th to the list as well.
I, I got a que, I, why don't we give, I made a second on this, but now I'm backing off a little bit because of what we're discussing. In my opinion, I think Max was relying on the long-range transportation committee as well, correct, Rich? He did utilize our, the input that you guys were using. I guess my question would be, does Max feel that the transportation committee is just not working for him? Or would he feel, I would like to hear what Max has to say about that before we disband this. So right now, I, I'm not going to make a second on that. I am going to back off on that.
Chris, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
What, what can I say is, what would be easier for you to leave in place what we have in the weekend? Or to start over from scratch? I mean, what would be most advantageous? I know it's kind of putting you on the spot.
Yeah. I guess what would be easier would probably be keeping what we have in place. You can always change appointments around if those, if other people are more interested, if we want to get more citizen input. I'm okay with that as well. Because I mean, if we disband it, like I said, we're going to have to have another group come together, maybe under a different name, a different mission statement. There's going to be a group like this that exists moving forward. It's just a matter of opinion if we want it to be this current group or a new one.
Okay, so if we left it in place, like you said, we could change things around. And I think I know who might be a good candidate for the chair.
Right. Max just showed up, can we hear from him?
Sure, Max, jump in.
Thank you. So I guess the question you had was to know what work we're doing on that group? Is that, is that what it is?
Or do you feel like it's functional?
I thought the group was created in order to not only give more information to the members of the committee to better understand how we're doing the selection of the roads, how we're rating the roads, et cetera, and also to involve members of the public in the discussion. So it was going to be a group with some members of council and some members of the public. And so when, when I first heard that the group was going to, to be formed, I contacted Rich and I asked to do a presentation of what we were doing at the time. And we had those discussions. And I guess I felt the, the committee had some ideas which we took into account with what we're doing with the roads. The committee hasn't met in a long time. Maybe there was not a need to meet. If there was other, if there was other input that the committee had in the way we, we do things with the road program.
Thank you, Max, if I may. I would, I first, I made this motion. I would unwind this motion if we could, if we could somehow, I don't know, table this and restructure the mission and, and make sure that this is going to meet once a month and figure out, you know, put Mark in there as the, as the chair and blah, blah, blah. I mean, none of that's my job. But I'm just saying, if we could make a major change to this thing, I would, I would unwind my motion. But as it, as it is right now, we never did anything. I was in there for a year and a half before Mark got there. We met twice and it was, and we didn't, I didn't feel like we got much accomplished, so.
So I think the referendum came out of there. The.
Yeah, but we didn't do anything with the referendum.
Referendum didn't come back as, and it was not substantial in any one direction. We were in a position where.
That, that was, that was not a unanimous opinion.
That's fine.
And so if I, if I could just add.
That's what came out of the long-range transportation committee. Nothing came out of that, it's ridiculous.
Well, like I said, it wasn't functional. Anyways, I'm done talking.
Chris, go ahead.
If I could just add, I guess in support of Rich too, just like the referendum had a mix of answers, our committee had a mix of opinions as well. So I think a lot of the, maybe stalemates that came out of it was because we almost had a 50-50 split of, you know, going one way versus going the other. So I, I don't know if a new committee with new appointments solves it because we do want to make sure we're getting a collective opinion of the community as a whole, which is both people who think we do need to spend more money on roads and people who maybe don't. Just a point.
Okay. I can see Ian's stepped out of the room. But he's speaking with the A.
I don't blame him.
Ian, are you there? Okay.
I'm back.
General consensus, this is just from what I've been hearing here is, with the count, I want to leave it the way it is for now. Chris, weaken or change it or whatever he decides to do with it. We have a motion on the floor to disband it. It was a motion and a second. So if we choose to leave it the way it is and let Chris work with it, what he wants to do, we would basically have to vote on this, vote not to disband it, correct?
If, if the individuals withdrew their motion, you wouldn't have a motion on the floor and it could just stay for lack of motion. Or you could vote to the negative. Either way.
Okay, well then, the easiest way, I guess, then the council was wrong, but, sorry, Jake.
Ian doesn't follow Robert's rules.
God, Ian's rules are important.
We already had the second draw of his motion or his second.
Right, I understand it. Anyhow, long story short, then.
That's incorrect. John Butchlick did not second it. Mark Allen.
I thought he did.
No. Justice Smith made the motion and it's seconded by Mark Allen.
Sorry, I thought John did.
So.
I don't hear any major, I don't hear any major changes to, to the, the mission. So I'm, I'm sticking with it. I'm sure it's going to get, it's going to get voted down, but I'm staying with it.
One, one of the things, when I met with Max, when I first joined the council, I asked about, you know, where do, where do roads get rated? How do they make determinations? And Ian's response to me was that that comes out of the long-range transportation planning committee. And there's, you can, you can, you can shake your head no, Rich, but that's what Ian, that's what Max told me.
No, we did not do any, any ratings of roads or moving of roads.
So you do ratings? That's where he reported that information to was long range transportation.
I, I'm sorry, I don't recall ever saying that. The rating is done by our consultant, Concall Engineering Group. They are the one who go on site, they're the one who do the rating. I don't recall ever telling you that the committee was doing the rating.
I didn't say the committee was doing the rating. That's where you were.
What did you say then?
You told me that's where you reported to, that when the PESA reports came out every two years and they were prepared for the state, for submission to the state, that they were presented to the transportation planning committee.
Yes. If we had a meeting and we had the results of the PESA rating, then I would bring it to that meeting, yes.
Okay, so not having meetings sort of records that function happening.
Steve, can we call the question?
Sure can. Justice, your motion is to disband it?
Correct.
We're going to review the resolution, Mark seconded it. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Ropel.
Stephanie.
Alderman Butchlick?
No.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier?
No.
Alderman Jenkins?
I'm going to abstain.
Alderman Caston?
No.
Alderman Hookster?
No.
Alderman Model?
Aye.
Alderman, Alderman Chris and Kennedy?
No.
Motion fails, five, two, one. Abstaining.
Okay, so basically that means the long-range transportation committee existence. Mayor elect Jenkins get working, correct? Okay. Moving on, 13 requests for tri-party terminated agreements at 1613 West Washington Street with a presentation by Sidin Jager, Max Marshall, and Al Max.
Thank you. Tri-Paw owns a property at 1613 West Washington Street. And they were ordered by the Department of Natural Resources to do some investigation and remediation of soils and groundwater contamination originating from their property. So in order to do those tasks, they asked the city to install monitoring wells on, on land owned by the city to the southeast of their property and also in the right-of-way of Washington Street. They recently notified us that they completed their remediation efforts and the DNR has closed the site and they will no longer need those monitoring wells. So they wish to terminate the two agreements that they have with the city. One that was done in 2001 and another one that was done in 2018. I received the DNR closure document. I also received the report from the inspector who witnessed the abandonment of the wells. The first well was abandoned in 2010 and the second one was at the end of 2018. So I had also a site visit last week with the parks director and the director of public works. And we found the site condition to be satisfactory to the city. Therefore, I will ask the common council to approve the termination of the two agreements by using the document that is attached and that the city attorney reviewed.
Motion to approve.
I've got a question, Max.
Yes.
Just a verification. Well, first of all, I just want to make sure you understand that my issue is not with you at all. You're doing a great job. I just have, I just have a little bit of an issue with the function of that. Anyways, I talked, I talked with Mark Petrovich a little bit before the meeting. He happened to be in front of the screen and he, I asked him about this particular issue. And he said that we are not, we're, we're not open to it. We're not open to any future potential issues if there's, if there winds up being a bunch of, a bunch more contamination in the ground right there. It'll either wind up laying back on, back on the owners or it'll go on to, I always forget the name, the next place that's by. Thank you, Quick Trip. It'll wind up one of those, we're not, we're not assuming any liability by getting out of these contracts, right?
Yes, that is correct. That is the way the DNR closure document is written. And those two agreements specifically related to just the wells that they needed to, to do their investigation, their, their testing and everything. So the city is not liable. If anything develops in the future, it will fall back on the property owners or the new property owners of this property.
Great, thank you.
All right. We, we have a motion?
Motion approved, sorry.
We have a second?
No, I, I had a motion.
Oh, you did?
I made a motion.
Second, second, I'm sorry.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier?
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins?
Aye.
Alderman Caston?
Aye.
Alderman Hookster?
Aye.
Alderman Model?
Aye.
Alderman Chris and Kennedy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Max, thank you. We're disbanding chapter 12 of the municipal code along with the city clerk's operator's licenses.
So. Yep, so this was a request that comes out of a fairly recent act that was adopted by the legislature. Functionally, what it does is allows the city by ordinance to delegate the adoption or the issuance of, of operator's licenses to the city clerk. It allows for both temporary and full operator's licenses to be delegated. The way this ordinance would work is if there's a operator's license received, it would still go to the police department. As long as both, or if, if either the police department or the city clerk are recommending denial or, or referring it to the licensing committee, then it would go through the process we had tonight. Otherwise, it would allow for routine licensing to be issued by the clerk and not to have to approve those. Just allows for a quicker response, especially if there's a delay in having meetings.
Can you say that again? So if somebody is going to be approved and Stephanie and Chief Moeller approve, it would allow them to both push that forward? But if it was going to be denied, it would then come before the council?
Correct. So if it was routine and there were no issues on the background check and everything else, they would be able to issue the, the operator's license? Keep in mind, it's only operator's licenses, it's not alcohol licenses for establishments. But if, if in, you know, on, on any given licensing committee meeting, there's the list of operator's licenses which are itemized by list, those that just go through the routine process would be issued by the clerk immediately. If either the clerk or the police department refer any, or may refer any license to the licensing. or may refer any license, uh, to the licensing board if they recommend for denial.
We're just cutting down the bureaucracy, huh?
Yeah, yeah, just, just streamlining things.
Gotcha. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Great, they have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? That, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Chavallier?
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins?
Aye.
Alderman Caston?
Aye.
Alderman Hookerster?
Aye.
Alderman Model?
Aye.
Alderman Chris and Kennedy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number fifteen is discussion and decision to fill the Alderman district for vacancy. Uh, this is something that we're looking at doing the same as we did when, uh, Alderman kissed, resigned. There was a email sent to me this afternoon regarding this and the question was brought up whether this is something that we want to discuss as the sitting common council at this point or if we want to postpone it for twenty-four hours and let the new council and the new mayor address it tomorrow. It's just being thrown out there for consideration anyways.
Motion to, a motion to, uh, suspend discussion for twenty-four hours and add an item to the organizational meeting agenda tomorrow after the swearing's end, swearing ends.
Ian, I correct that this has to be postponed, not suspended?
I, yeah, you'd, you'd postpone it till tomorrow.
So, okay, as long as Ian says it's fine, we're good then. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Aye.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor of postponing this till tomorrow signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alderman Chris and Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Chavallier?
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins?
Aye.
Alderman Caston?
Aye.
Alderman Hookerster?
Aye.
Alderman Model?
Aye.
Alderman Chris and Kennedy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, that decision will be made to tomorrow night by the sitting council and the mayor. Item number six, it has a resolution honoring Alderman Richard Caston. I've never heard before, Ian, it reads, whereas Richard Caston was elected District Five Alderperson from April of twenty fourteen to April of twenty twenty, faithfully representing the constituents of the city of West Bend for six years. And whereas during his tenure, he served the chair, or as chair of the finance committee, as a representative of the Board of Public Works, elected bargaining committee, commercial revolving loan fund, long-range transportation planning committee, planning commission and tourism commission. Whereas Richard Caston exemplified outstanding leadership as a District Five Alderperson, voting a substantial portion of his time for the betterment and enrichment of the citizens of West Bend. Therefore, be it resolved at the common council of the city of West Bend, Washington County, Wisconsin, under as Richard Caston expresses its deep appreciation for his dedicated service to the city of West Bend, hoping it'll be passed and approved on April twentieth, twenty twenty. Rich, thank you very much for the thing you did over the last six years. It's gonna be a hard job taking your position.
Thanks, I, I thoroughly enjoyed it.
I will look for it, uh, motion again.
A motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye and against, definitely.
Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Chavallier? Alderman Jenkins?
Aye.
Alderman Caston?
Aye.
Alderman Hookerster?
Aye.
Alderman Model?
Aye.
Alderman Chris and Kennedy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Rich, once again. Item seventeen is a resolution honoring Andrew Chavallier. I have that here in front of me. Whereas Andrew Chavallier was elected as District Three Alderperson from April eighteenth, actually, April of twenty eighteen to April of twenty twenty, faithfully representing the constituents of the city of West Bend for two years. Whereas during his tenure, he served as the chair of the Board of Public Works, as a representative of finance committee, year management committee, long-range transportation planning committee, redevelopment authority, tourism commission. And when, whereas Andrew Chavallier exemplified outstanding leadership as District Three Alderperson, voting a substantial portion of his time for the betterment and enrichment of the citizens of West Bend, now therefore be it resolved at the common council of the city of West Bend, Washington County, Wisconsin, Andrew honors Andrew Chavallier and expresses its deep appreciation for his dedicated service to the city of West Bend. Again, hopefully it'll be passed and approved the twentieth of April, twenty twenty. Remember, all your time and stuff you've put in and all the things you've attended as the Rich, you guys are both fantastic Aldermen, we're gonna miss you and you're gonna be also a hard person to replace.
Thanks.
Second.
I'm sorry, we can get who made the motions in a second.
I, I made the motion, Mattel, uh, Justice, second.
All right, thank you very much. I have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Chavallier?
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins?
Aye.
Alderman Caston?
Aye.
Alderman Hookerster?
Aye.
Alderman Model?
Aye.
Alderman Chris and Kennedy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, thank you very much, Andrew. Item being submitted, we're going to be cementing section one hundred and five zero, sub one, municipal code regarding membership, membership parks and recreation commission. And Ian?
Uh, this is just a simple amendment, uh, that, uh, adjusts the membership of the park and rec, uh, committee uh, to, to Alderpersons, uh, and I believe it's, uh, five citizen or, yeah, five citizen members. We basically just took one Alder, or one citizen member and converted it to an Alderperson. Uh, still the same seven members.
Perfect, thank you. Look for a motion on the item, if there's no comments or questions.
motion approved.
What, what was, uh, what was the reasoning behind that? I'm sorry. I don't think, I don't think it's a bad idea, I'm just curious what, why, why we're doing that.
Just, I, I can answer.
Okay.
Uh, we just have two Aldermen who are really eager to stay on the planning commission, or sorry, the parks and recreation commission.
Okay, gotcha, great. That's, that's good enough for me, thank you.
Yep.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Chavallier?
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins?
Aye.
Alderman Caston?
Aye.
Alderman Hookerster?
Aye.
Alderman Model?
Aye.
Alderman Chris and Kennedy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, item nineteen. Entertain a motion to adjourn the closed session pursuant to state statutes, section nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds, conducting other specific public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session. Purchase agreed. Now I can read, what was it, same time you said? And item twenty, entertain a motion to adjourn the closed session pursuant to state statutes nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds, conducting other specific public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session. Closed development of South parcel, mid twelve, parcel number one 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 nine dash one three two zero dash zero five eight. Do I need a motion, please?
Um, quick question, Steve, would it make sense to, uh, uh, take, uh, item twenty-three, the reports prior to going into closed session so that people won't be sitting on the, uh, uh, city channel for some amount of time, not knowing when we're coming back?
I was just invited, we're gonna be coming back, we're gonna open session anyhow, so.
Oh yeah, we have to, say it.
So I need a motion on the item, please. Second. I have a motion and a second, Stephen, hope so, please.
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Chavallier?
Aye.
Alderman Caston?
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins?
Aye.
Alderman Hookerster?
Aye.
Alderman Model?
Aye.
Alder, Alderman Chris and Kennedy?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're in closed session.
All right, we're back in the session. Item number 21, special regarding purchase agreements. Agree, motion on that item.
Motion to approve a six-day extension as written in the purchase or the amendment.
Second.
I have a motion of second and it comes with questions. Not all in favor, simply by saying aye when Stephanie calls your name.
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier?
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins?
Aye.
Alderman Kastner?
Aye.
Alderman Hookerster?
Aye.
Alderman Model?
I'm sorry.
Alderman Kennedy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
It's good.
Right, item 22, possible action on potential land sale, hit number 12. Parcel 1119, F1320, Action 058. Looking for a motion on this item.
Uh, motion approved. Ian, you need to...
Yeah, I'll call the motion. So, looking for a motion to enter into a 60-day exclusive letter of intent with American Construction Services for that parcel.
Uh, it's so moved.
Second.
Right, we have a motion of second. If there's no comments or questions, everybody say goodbye by saying aye. All those in favor, say aye when Stephanie calls.
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier?
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins?
Aye.
Alderman Kastner?
Aye.
Alderman Hookerster?
Aye.
Alderman Model?
Aye.
Alderman Percy Kennedy? And that one carries.
That motion passes, thank you. Item 23, report by Alderman Jacob and Alderman Kastner regarding...
I was gonna let Rich have this one if he'd like.
Sure, so, did a lot of splitting of lots, combining of lots. That was the vast majority of what we had. Right along highways, there's a couple of parties that were trying to create two lots for some residential development. There's a couple of those that we had. And then we have the splitting of the lots for the hotel and office happening there over by the Riverwalk. The last two that we had were old, I believe it was a Midas. That was on Washington Street is going to be converted into... It's called Title Max, so it'll have some... Instead of a car repair place, it'll be more of a office-type setting there. Hopefully that goes through and that'll look really nice. And finally, the Horizon Store on Washington was looking to have some additional signs put up over and above what was allowed through their developer agreement, through the planning commission allowances, and those were declined. So, overall, pretty short, pretty quick meeting.
All right, thank you, Rich. And then before we... Tomorrow night, we will have our organizational meeting at Block Upper Room. Tonight, we're saying goodbye to Rich and goodbye to Andrew, who's serving West End. Tomorrow night, we'll be swearing in new mayor, Chris. Look forward to doing that. Swearing in John and Justice, who got re-elected to district. And new Alderman, Redford West and Jandola. Personally alone, I'd just like to thank everybody for giving me this opportunity to be acting mayor. Of course, I'd be lying if I wasn't saying I was a little bit jealous of giving up this seat. But, come to like it, it's fun, it's interesting. I learned a couple of lots. And I just want to thank everybody for helping me along the way. There was a learning curve involved, obviously. Everybody stopped me from looking like an idiot at times, so I appreciate that. And other than that, we'll see you all tomorrow. No other comments or announcements?
You did great, Steve, and thank you, thank you, Rich, thank you, Andrew. You guys were awesome to work with, and I learned a lot from you, I really appreciate it.
Thanks to everybody, Eric Crew enjoyed it. Steve, you did a fantastic job. The learning curve wasn't noticeable if you had one, so it went really smooth. And I miss working with all of you, thanks.
Thanks, Rich. Right, nothing else? Your major?
Over and out.
Thank you, have a great night.
Thanks.